So it looks like we're just missing Gordon, is that correct?
I can send him a text, Judy.
Great. There he is, great. Okay, I think we're all here, everyone in the space, I hope. I'm gonna open this meeting and call the work session of the Eugene School Board, School District 4J, Board of Directors to order. It's Wednesday, March 2nd, 2022 at 5:32. And we have all seven board members present on Zoom. We have Alicia Hayes, Laurel O'Rourke, Maya Rabasa, Mary Walston, Martina Shabram, Gordon Leifer, and myself, Judy Newman. And we have our presenters here from Alma Advisory Group. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Monica Rosen. And you want to introduce our other participants?
Yes, hi, everyone. It's wonderful to see you again. Monica Santana Rosen here with Alma Advisory Group. Also with our team, we have Sydney Kabody there. Sydney, if you want to just go ahead and wave. And we've got Sylvia Flowers from our team here on the line. And Judy, is it possible for Sylvia to share her screen?
I think Lisa has that, Lisa or Carrie have control, but I think it is, right?
Sylvia can share her screen, please do.
Okay, wonderful. So for this evening, we're going to do something that we promised to do a couple of weeks ago. We're going to do it tonight. And our plan for this evening is just to share a little bit more about what the Alma team has learned over the course of our conversations with the Eugene 4J community. We're going to move to the second slide. I first thought that we should give everyone in the community an update since the last time that I was with, with you all in a, in a public meeting. Following my last meeting with the board, the board actually spent two full days of their personal weekend. Board members canceled vacations and canceled any personal plans. And this last weekend, Saturday and Sunday, spent 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And on Sunday, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, so two full days to really openly reflect on their collective strengths as a board, why their collaborative work can be challenging at times. And they really wanted to learn more about each other and what brings each person to the work. Wanted to share that, you know, we know that the world doesn't change overnight, but this event truly was an important opportunity for the board to reset and to build community with, with each other. Really felt that the board members took their work seriously. They stayed present throughout both days. And they really worked through some of their most, most pressing challenges. They also developed a few important practices to lean into as future conflicts inevitably will arise. So for the Alma team, this was a strong start to what is surely a continued effort to leverage and value each of the board members' perspectives in order to accelerate bold moves on behalf of your students. My observations, I left the retreat feeling a lot of hope and optimism for this board's future. Now it's time for the community to see your good work in action. This board is unified in its desire to dismantle structural racism within the district. That's very clear to me. Leaders, considering applying for this role of superintendent here, they'll be watching the board members' interactions with each other and with the staff. They will choose whether to apply based on their alignment with your mission and vision and whether they feel they will be set up for success here. How you show up as a governing body, I know I don't need to tell you this, but I'm gonna say it anyway. How you show up as a governing body from this point forward, it really matters. And it matters for the work you want to accelerate for your students. And it matters for your ability to attract and select a transformative leader for the district. And so, you know, we were very optimistic leaving the retreat. Some of the commitments that board members made with each other is to continue to be curious, to seek to understand each other's points of view. We see your collective, one of your collective strengths is the diversity of perspectives that you bring. We don't see this as problematic. We think it helps for you, it assists in making better decisions. Board members agreed to address concerns directly. And if they have a certain, if they're having a certain interpretation of what board members are, are communicating, board members agreed to verify and make sure and check for understanding before responding. And perhaps most importantly, for individuals to be able to fully bring themselves to the table and participate in important decision-making discussions. The board agreed, board members agreed to make no derogatory comments either in conversations with staff or out in the public arena about each other, whether that's in the press, social media, or other forums. So again, just want to emphasize, this is the beginning of a process. But we feel really good about the progress that was made in such a short amount of time. And it really just demonstrates that this is a board fully dedicated to the students of Eugene 4J and, and wanting to work together cohesively to be able to move that work forward. So Judy, I don't know if you have any comments about that before I move on past the retreat?
I think you captured it well, and I'm going to be talking more about it tonight in my comments at the board meeting. So thank you.
Wonderful. Excellent. All right. So wanted to move on to the next slide. And I wanted to just refresh for everyone what the board agreed their shared purpose was in the superintendent search. And this is something that Alma does frequently with boards of directors who are leading superintendent and CEO searches, just to make sure we're all clear how we want this process to run and what we're looking for. And what the board said was, they want to lead a fair and open search process for the next permanent superintendent of Eugene School District 4J. And they also shared that their purpose is to communicate clearly and to lead a transparent search process designed to mitigate bias every step of the way, where all voices of the 4J community are valued. And so it was important for the board that we would speak with as many different people as we could. And tonight, we're going to share a little bit about what we, what we learned in those conversations. Now that we're moving forward in this process, we want to share a little bit with the community about our expected timeline. Alma has been recruiting and discussing and talking to candidates from the very beginning. Our expectation then that is that March is really going to be a prime time for us to really solidify the applicant pool for the district. We're expecting that by late March, we'll be at a point where we've passed Alma's initial screen. And we've moved on to a second round interview process. Alma's screening process includes both behavioral questions, but also scenario-based questions tied to the competencies that are laid out in the job profile, which is something that the board is going to be voting on this evening. What our expectation is, is that by April, the board will be considering and moving forward into a semifinalist round of interviews. We expect that to include some form of performance task. The point of every step of our process is to be able to see how candidates actually make decisions, what their core values are, and how they apply the experiences they've told us about to real-life situations. So we'll be working with the board to craft those activities and expect to bring those into the semifinalist round. We think we're on track, on track to move to a finalist round as soon as late April. The board has expressed an interest in having a finalist round that clearly engages community and voices again as, as key sources of input into the process. The board would then take that input to make their final decision. So that's roughly how we're seeing it. We think by early May, the board is in a good position to be able to announce their permanent superintendent. So now I want to switch gears and talk a little bit about the community engagement that took place in this process. So as we've shared in the past, there were three primary ways that community members were able to participate. We had a community gathering that was open to anyone who would come. We had translators available to, to be able to speak with anyone who needed translation services. And as people gathered, we then broke out into smaller groupings to be able to engage people in small roundtable, virtual roundtable conversations. Our goal was really to engage in authentic conversations with community members about their aspirations for the districts, the things that kept them up at night, the things they were worried about, and the things they really wanted the next superintendent to be able to lead for them. In addition to the community gathering, we also held interviews and focus groups. So focus groups were organized by role and by affinity group. We got to speak with teachers, students, principals, staff, union leaders, community partners, and others. And these opportunities allowed us to have deeper conversations by specific role. So really talking to everyone from the teacher hat to explain as an example what they were thinking of and what was important to them. And for those who couldn't participate in our community gatherings, we also held a staff and community survey. We'll be sharing some of that data from that survey. The survey was very well, we got a very high participation. We'll share more about that, but we had over 3,700 respondents to the community survey with a really nice representation of students participating. So we're looking forward to sharing with you a little bit more about what, what came out of that process. So in total, we ended up holding 38 meetings between community gatherings, focus groups, student panels, and board member interviews. We spoke personally with 215 individuals from each of these different groups. And that included, by the way, graduates as well as current sitting students and district staff and community leaders. And we, our intention is to use that information to really strengthen the role description and the competencies that we then take to recruit and screen candidates for this role. So what you see on this slide here, it's just a little bit more information about who participated in the process, and it might be a little hard to, to see here. But what we see is that, you know, roughly the makeup of participation seems to mirror in a lot of ways the particip, the, the demographics of the Eugene 4J community. So you have here about 60% of, of the respondents are white. You'll see about 14.5% preferred not to answer. And we also had a significant number, about 3%, who labeled themselves as other. And when we looked at those comments, many of them chose some combination of multiracial. The question was originally designed to sort of choose everything that applies to you. And so that, what, what we see in a lot of the other category are things that either were multiracial or multiracial families represented there. About 7% of the respondents were Latinx. And, and about 4%, just under 4%, were Black respondents, among others. So we saw really high participation from a number of groups, but we were especially encouraged that nearly half of the participants came from parents, caregivers, family members in the community. And 26% of the respondents were actual Eugene 4J students who were very thoughtful in the things that they had to say about their experiences and what they were hoping for, for the future of Eugene 4J. About 9% were teachers. 5% labeled as other. About 5% were classified employees. And about 2% came from community organizations. We also asked participants to let us know, you know, which region of Eugene they were most closely affiliated with. And so we see a 34% representation from South Eugene, 20% from North Eugene, just shy of 20% from the Sheldon region, and just over 17% for the Churchill region. And then about seven, a little over 7% outside of 4J. So it gives you a sense of the regional representation in the survey. And going back to the community gatherings and the focus groups that we had, we wanted to share how we designed the questions here. And this is really important for the Alma team because this is how we get insight from people. And we're, we're not just really trying to ask the basic kind of questions that you would see. We want to have rich, deep conversations where people can be somewhat vulnerable and share their lived experiences with us. So these are the questions that we ask. We focus on individuals' worries. What keeps them up at night, especially for parents? What's keeping them up at night as they think about their, their children and their futures? What they love most? For us, the superintendent isn't just coming in to fix what's not working or improve what needs improvement, but also to protect and sustain the things that are working, the things that are just building momentum, the things that are going well. And we want to hear from community members what they think about those things. We do focus on areas of improvement. And then we ask individuals what skills they think that they need in, in the next superintendent. One unique thing that we ask is what community members want to see from the Alma team to demonstrate that actually what they shared made a difference. So for us, this is not a performative exercise. This is not something that we do just to say we did it. We want to come back in forums like this to say, actually, this is what we heard. And this is what it means. This, these are the implications for the board, for the things you should consider for this search. So in all, you know, of course, like any community, Eugene 4J is not a monolith. We heard a lot of diverse ideas. And people were very open and candid with us in the things that they saw and the things that they wanted the board to consider with this new role, with this next hire, rather. So I'm going to be bouncing a little bit back and forth between the survey and what we heard from focus groups. And I want to start with in the survey, the things that were top four strengths. We asked respondents what 4J does well today. And top of the list was student academic performance, student enrollment and attendance, work around equity and anti-racism. And I'll talk a little bit more about that because people are seeing progress in that area and yet want a lot more. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. And people saw communication between the district office, schools, and families as a strength. So these were the, the areas that had the highest percent of people saying that these were areas that were current strengths for the district. We wanted to share a little bit more insight on those things that community, community members shared as strengths. And so want to just highlight a few things and share some quotes from individuals, either from the focus groups or from the survey respondents, which had open text options included. So many families shared with us their appreciation for the rich language immersion programs that are available in the international programs that exist in Eugene 4J. Many individuals talked about the fact that educators are really committed to their students and are adept at meeting students where they are. So as, as an example, someone said they really care about students. We teach kids how to read so they can read and be critical thinkers. A lot of individuals talked about the strength of the district being the staff and see this as the most important asset and resources and resource. And just this idea that you really have passionate educators at every level. And this was something we also heard in student comments as well in the survey. This idea that, you know, I know who I can go to if I need help and that I, that I feel supported. There were other sides of that equation. There were some who didn't feel that way. But that was something that we saw come out frequently in the survey. Again, on this topic of diversity, inclusion, and safety, I think this statement says it best in this third bullet here, that the district is moving in the right direction. People are acknowledging that there has been progress, that work is moving along and that there, there are tools now in place that really, we're in a good place to really move forward with good momentum in the future. And I think that really expresses the spirit of the comments that were provided there. People acknowledge that there is a strong commitment to support schools and families. We saw a few comments about the wraparound team, something that did not exist prior to the pandemic, as well as the support of culture navigators and social workers. And so people are really seeing that the district is committed to supporting families, especially in the midst of the pandemic. People saw a lot of rallying to support during such a difficult time. Now, we have heard a lot about communication. You'll be hearing a few more comments about this. You know, both people valuing this as something that needed to be bolstered in the future, but also in particular from parents, feeling that there's a lot of communication that goes out to parents, that teachers in particular are sending out a live message to parents and helping parents understand what's happening in the classroom. So now let's talk a little bit about opportunities for improvement. The top four areas of improvement that came up in the survey align almost identically with what we heard from individual stakeholders. The first being a real focus and concern for the mental and physical health and well-being, not just of students, but also of staff. And a lot of this has to do with the pandemic and the state of, the state of where things are right now. The really feeling that we can't just focus on academics. We have to think about the whole student in a number of ways. And I'll talk, I'll talk a little bit about diverse learners as well in a moment. The second and third pieces for us are a bit related, and it's about preparing students for success in life, not just for potential college pathways, but also for non-college pathways. And we saw a lot of comments and interest in saying, and perspectives from individuals saying, there's a, there's a lot of focus on graduating high school and a lot of focus on what getting into colleges. And we could be doing more around things that don't necessarily involve college, but also involve career pathways and making sure that students have exposure to that early in their education. And then finally, equity and anti-racism. It was overwhelmingly a focus for the community in lots of different ways. So I feel like it's on every slide, but I have some more direct comments about that in just a moment. So, you know, we wanted to share what we heard from individuals, parents, staff, teachers, students, in, with a little bit more information around the areas that needed to be strengthened. So first, it's around comprehensive training and support for teachers and staff to have the tools needed to support the neurodiversity among students. This is really acknowledging the fact that students have diverse learning needs and that some have the perspective that, that, that staff could use a lot more support and development around how to be able to meet the needs of all of their students. In addition, there was a focus on collaboration. This was a word that came up a lot in our surveys. Community members are really looking for leadership to honor the voices of students, teachers, and community. Students who are reflecting, feeling that their voices aren't necessarily valued all the time. Teachers feeling that leadership doesn't necessarily collaborate with them. And by leadership, that's both the school leadership and district leadership. And so we saw a real theme around teachers saying that they wanted to feel a sense of partnership with district leadership as district is making key decisions. That was a clear theme in the feedback that came out of our conversations and the survey. And community members as well. And for community members, it's a little bit about not just hearing from the most present and loud and available and accessible voices, but also the voices that can be excluded at times that aren't as represented as others. And so as the board said at the beginning of this process, where all voices are valued, community members are telling us they don't have easy access. They don't all feel they have easy equal access to be able to participate and have their voices heard. And they see that as something that they hope that the next superintendent will be able to address. I already, I did mention neurodiversity, you know? And this is something that, this third bullet here is a trend across a number of districts that the Alma team is getting to work with. But, you know, as we are continuing to experience the pandemic and recover from the pandemic, there truly is this focus on the mental health of students and school safety for students and for schools. And that was something that was frequently noted. It's something parents worried about, something students are concerned about. And I'll be able to share a little bit about that in a moment. I mentioned earlier about not just college opportunities, but post, post-secondary pathways and career opportunities and allowing students have exposure to that early and often in their education. And also ensuring access to rigorous and high-quality program for all students, not just for some students. So some questions emerging in the community around equity and what programming all students have access to. There was a pretty strong trend with the teachers that we spoke with, communication of feeling of demoralization. And I think what's really important here is this idea of feeling a sense of not having enough autonomy to be changemakers in their own classrooms and in their schools. That some things were so directed that the idea to innovate feels restricted right now to many of the people that we interacted with. So we wanted to share that. So here, I finally want to talk a little bit more about equity, seeing it as an emerging strength, but also a place where there's a lot of room to grow. And so what community members noted with us was some progress around the district really developing an understanding of equity and starting to build a muscle around advocating for students in the margins. Individuals shared with us, they feel there are a lot of resources that are now available, but they're not fully formed yet and not necessarily as coherent or embedded in the, in the system. This is kind of the next phase of growth that, that, that community, community members see for Eugene. At the same time, there really is a lot of pent-up energy in the community to do what we would call bold and proactive equity work to address racism and ableism that feels at times unchecked in schools. This is something that families talked about, and this is something in particular students talked about. This experience of, at times, religious discrimination, punitive relationships between students and teachers. This idea that as all school systems, many school systems are really facing structures that are inherently racist and working well for some, but not for all, and actually disadvantaging some. And so there is a lot of interest in the community to really do something about that. And I'll share in a little bit, there are dissenting voices here, but this was overwhelming in every single one of our conversations and across the survey feedback that we received. So what skills are most important for the next superintendent? Here's what your community said. They want someone who's a change agent. They want someone who has a proven track record of standing their ground, taking risks, trying new things, and questioning things that aren't working. They want someone who's going to lean into conflict, someone who's going to seek the best outcome always for the health and wellness of students. And someone who holds themselves accountable and others accountable. But that's reflective, acknowledges mistakes with transparency and emphasizes, empathizes, sorry, empathizes with communities. The word used in, in a lot of the communication was in the margins. And what we mean by that is communities that in the past have either been excluded or underrepresented. So what we're seeing here is a real interest in really being reflective, working for change, and moving the, moving the school system forward in a new direction. Mary, did you want to ask a question there?
I can wait, I can wait until you're finished with your presentation. I just wanted to get in the queue. Okay.
Oh, they, no problem. I've got about three more slides and then I'm done.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks for that.
Monica, are you frozen? I think she might be. Are you texting her Sylvia? I think she's trying to rejoin. This is a good slide to be studying for sure. A lot here. I think she's trying to get back in.
Yes. Does anybody know any good jokes?
I'm a bad joke teller. How about you?
What's a skeleton's least favorite room in the house? The living room.
Very good. I was thinking his favorite room might be the closet, but I don't know.
The closet. That's a pretty good one, too.
So Lisa, do you see Monica trying to get back in or Carrie?
I don't see that she's logged in at this time. She might be trying on her end. She should be able to get right back into the panelist link.
Okay. I'm wondering, Sylvia's screen is off, but she's controlling the slides. I wonder if you guys want to move along or we should wait or Sydney?
Let's wait.
Monica's returning now. Great.
Okay.
We see you back here, Monica.
Goodness gracious. I'm so sorry about that. Hopefully, everything stays connected. Thank you for that. Sorry, I just said I had three slides to go. Can you all hear me all right? All right, great. All right, let's move on to the next slide. So I'm going to this next slide. So I wanted to share a little bit about what we heard in the survey comments. So we had over fourteen hundred open text responses to our survey and our team did the best that we could. So there's lots here, but a lot of people talked about these things on this particular slide. Students first was something that just came up over and over and over again. The question was, is there anything else they wanted to share about the superintendent search itself? And so a lot of the comments were around the traits that people really cared about. So what we heard over and over again was a real interest in a leader who puts students first in every decision that they make. A value for equity and inclusion was the next most frequent thing that was mentioned in this, in, in the survey. Someone who understands equity and inclusion, someone who cares about including and being sensitive to the LGBTQ plus community, someone who is culturally responsive and sensitive. These things just kept coming up over and over and over again in the survey. I will say there was a frequent mention of a desire for a leader of color. Someone that, so the diversity was something that popped up a lot in these open voluntary comments. And no politics, no politics, no politics. We just saw that in a lot of the comments. People want someone with no political agenda. There was a little bit of a, yes, they need to be able to navigate the politics, but they shouldn't be here with a political agenda. Communication was very strong, the ability to collaborate, partner with communities, with teachers, with parents, the ability to reach a lot across lines of difference, the ability to be transparent. A lot of those comments were there with the communication piece. The teacher focus was very interesting and it varied in a few different ways. One was teachers want to feel valued by the superintendent. There should be someone who values teachers, but also teachers really need to be retained. We want to see diverse teachers hired and we want to create positive working conditions. A few people specifically associated that with class size. But the, the idea of creating the conditions where teachers really feel they can innovate and do their best work, that was definitely a strong trend in the survey. The next big focus was around supporting students with diverse learning needs, which I spoke about earlier. People did mention the desire for a superintendent who has been in the classroom, who has educator experience. It wasn't as frequent a comment as the comments that I've already talked through, but it was definitely a trend. I've, I've mentioned safety and mental health, but I also want to call out the need for compassion and healing. Healing was a word that came up quite a lot in those open text comments, as well as a focus on ethics and integrity. In addition to that, the ability to sustain 4J's financial health and the ability to make improvements to the technology that's available in the classrooms and for each students. I want to share as well, a number of people said, stay, we want someone who will stay. We don't want someone where Eugene 4J is a stepping stone for them. We want someone committed to our community, someone who's really in it for the long haul. As I mentioned earlier, desire for qualified change agents. And, and I want to say as well, we had quite a few comments of support for the current interim superintendent. And that was definitely a trend in the survey. I want to call out that students, in addition to mentioning many of these things, students specifically called out a need to address bullying in the schools, as well as more inclusion, as I mentioned earlier, students feeling welcomed, feeling that they fit in, in the classroom and in their schools. But they also talked about bringing fun back to the classroom. But one student had a comment that they feel that there's such a focus on just graduating from high school. We've somehow lost touch with the fun and that really struck us. So we wanted to share that. As well as strengthening trust in relationships between teachers and their students. Students were pretty direct and clear that they don't all feel connected to their student, to their teachers. And some feel that their teachers are not supportive of them at all. So this was something that came up in particular with our student, with the students. On the next slide, I'll share some other perspectives mentioned. And I will say, you know, we want to honor all of the voices, so we're sharing this. But I will also say these were mentioned by a very limited few. But enough that we thought you should know that these perspectives are present in the community. You had about a handful of people who specifically called equity a distraction. They said things like, we, we appreciate equity. We think it's important, but it seems like it's coming at the expense of rigorous instruction. Those were the kinds of comments that were coming up. A number of responses, respondents talked about COVID protocols and face masks and feeling against, against face masks. There were several comments against LGBTQ plus inclusion or even acknowledgement of gender identity. There were a couple of people who made the comment that there are only two genders. And so there were comments like that in the survey. Some felt that there was an anti-right culture and that, that, that there is a culture of vilifying people who associate with the right. There were a few comments mentioning concerns about the current board. And then there were fewer than ten comments who were specifically saying not to consider the current interim. Again, these were all really few and far between, but we wanted you to have the full information. So that's what we wanted to share there. And that might be our last slide. So want to open it up for discussion with the board. What stood out to you? What questions you have? What was exciting here? What might have been difficult or concerning? And we can go ahead and close the sharing so that we can all see each other a little more easy, easily. And I saw, Mary, you had your hand raised up and wondering what question you had.
This is a simple one. This is the first time I've seen all this information and it's really good information. I hope we can get a copy of it as board members. And then I would love, love to see it posted on the, the website because it answers a lot of questions, I think, of questions I've been getting in the community. So that was my question. I think it's fairly simple and probably fairly simple to, to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, we would love to put this out on the website and share it. And we'll definitely make sure that all board members have a copy. And I do think Judy, it's out on board docs even. Is that right?
No, it's not yet. So it will be. I wasn't sure I could share it. So, and I didn't know exactly how with the Google Doc, but just, I wanted to just say two things. One is we're actually going to vote on these a week from tonight. We're going to talk about them and discuss them. We have a special meeting on March ninth to vote on these. So people have a chance to look at them and reflect on them. And then the other is that we don't have an executive session tonight, so we can go until quarter to seven. So.
Got it.
And also impressive with, with how you organized the data and pulled out the themes. There's really a lot to, to look at here, but I think it's really impressive how you captured the information. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. There's a whole team at Alma, Sydney, who I see here, and Sylvia did a ton of work, but also Nita on our team and Kathleen Shiverdecker, Brian Lynn, all analyzing the data and just painstakingly going through this. For us, this is, this is so important. It's, it's not a performative exercise. We really want to give you the full picture. We don't often surprise board members, but it's helpful to know. Sometimes there are things that feel really loud in the space and it turns out when, when you, when you really take everything into consideration, there are different points of view that really represent the full community. And we want to make sure that you have a clear perspective as you're informing, not just what the role needs to be, but also the context this next leader is going to be stepping into. So the voices of the community are incredibly important for us. Any other comments or questions?
Wow.
Any reactions, things that are really resonating with you as you're hearing what's, what's coming out of our conversations and what we learned?
I think I'm the only one with the hand up, but I think one of my surprises pleasantly was the demographic breakout of the respondents, which did really reflect and even a little bit exceed the, our community's diversity, which, so I was happy to see that. We tried to, we made an effort. So it was good to, to that, that we got that kind of response.
Yeah. Thank you, Judy. I really wanted to acknowledge the communications team in the district. They got the word out to all parents and families and also want to acknowledge a number of community groups that supported us both with getting individuals to community meetings. We had a, a monolingual Spanish event. We had a lot of support from the community to make sure people knew about it and could participate. So we're really grateful for everything, not, not just that the staff did to support, but also the community. Maya?
The, the part that really continues to stand out is the number of folks who participated in the survey. That, that's incredible. And in particular, the, the student participation is, is really exciting to me. It, it not only gives us more feedback, but it just demonstrates what amount of importance and attention is being paid to this process. And it, it just, it just really, I'm, I'm, I'm in awe. We do a lot of surveys around here and I don't, I don't think I've ever seen a result as extensive as this.
Yeah, we're, we are always struck by the wisdom that comes out of student voice and just how, you know, different it is from others' perspectives and how authentic and true. And I got to tell you, the students are the toughest interviewers. So if you want to put a superintendent candidate through a difficult process, we've just been through it with Cincinnati Public Schools. The students were phenomenal and they really asked the toughest questions of the candidates and kept them on their toes. So we love student voice. They're our favorite. They're our favorite audience to get to engage in the process. Thank you, Maya. Mary?
Thank you. I just find it interesting that there's a lot of good news about the district there. I mean, if you, maybe it's just that I'm, it's too much inside baseball or too close to it, but it certainly seems like we hear a lot, a lot, a lot of negative stuff and not the good positive stuff that's happening in the school. So that's good to see that. And that's part of the reason I, I hope we can get it up on the district website soon. I do think it's interesting that, that there's a high percentage of people feel like equity and our work around that is, is a high point and almost an equal number that feel like it's something that, that needs to be, be worked on. And so it's, I guess, your greatest strength, it's your greatest weakness, but, but that's, that's, it's instructive. And so, so thanks for, for highlighting that. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Mary. I, I think our take on it is like, it's sort of like we've only just begun. People are glad that things are happening in a way that feel really concrete and feel like we're, we're just beginning and we don't want to lose that momentum. And, and we have things in place, but, but have we really? We, we just have a long way to go with it and that. So, so it is, it was very interesting to see that trend there for sure. Thanks. Laurel, I saw your hand raised. Now you changed your mind.
So Monica, you know, I sent that grid and I sent it out to the staff just because there are a few. We don't have to make decisions. We're at a work session, but there are some decision points that really came out from our subcommittee conversation this week with Mary and Maya and myself. So I don't know if you want me to talk about it or you do. I think, you know, but we'll have to put out the kinds of decisions we'll have to make and then next week make, make those final. We, I'd, we'd love to hear your perspective on them too. So.
Absolutely. And I'm happy, Judy, if you want to share the screen, if you're able to, or we can just speak to what those different question points, we can also put our slide back up that has the timeline on it and speak to that.
I think Lisa was prepared or Carrie to share that. I think Lisa was prepared or Carrie to share that doc, that grid. It might just zero in on the things we need to talk about. Yeah.
Perfect.
Can everyone read that?
Yeah. I mean, I excellent. We might zoom in a little bit more. Lisa? If you hit the view button, uh, all the way at the top menu, yeah, I think you'll get a zoom kind of a thing. There you go. Excellent. Perfect. Thank you. So you know, Alma is actively recruiting and screening candidates for this role. For us at the Alma team, it's never over until the offer letter is signed and approved by the board. So we're kind of always recruiting. We are in, in our prime recruiting window. And so this is a time where we're really getting the word out to potential candidates, talking to them. I will tell you, we've been in conversations, just about everyone mentions. Having watched some of your meetings and that's very common. So typically in a superintendent search process, uh, super, superintendent candidates will be out there of watching meetings, looking to see what the major issues are that the board is grappling with. What the staff is presenting, how the board is interacting with the staff. So these are all things that are, that are coming up in our conversations with candidates. We are in our sort of peak recruitment now through the, through, through really the end of March. Our hope is that we will have at least 10 to 15 strong applicants that the Alma team is engaging with deeply in the month of March and the hope would be potentially to come to a semifinalist stage at, in, in early April. Typically that would be five or six, five to six applicants that move forward. And so there are a few guiding questions there, but I'll, I'll just lay it all out and then we'll go Judy through the different, through the different questions that are on the table. From the semifinalist stage, we would then move forward to a finalist stage where we would have two to three applicants. We certainly wouldn't want to have fewer than two. And we can talk a lot about this, but just as we did at the beginning of the process, for us, it really helps and is very informative to the board to have community members have the opportunity to engage again in authentic ways. So we usually have a, a process by which we have, uh, community members able to submit questions that they want to ask the candidates. And then panelists that then choose the questions that they want to ask that represent their respective groups. So we would propose something similar at the finalist stage. We're hoping to get there as soon as mid-April. And then from there, the board would get input from the community and then make their final selection decision. So that's really what we're, what, what are the key steps of the process? There are a few important questions here. One is who does the board want to engage at every step of the way? So typically the first round is done only by the Alma team. Primarily because there's just a huge volume of applicants into the process. So at this point, uh, we're, we are over 30 applicants. For this role, we expect that number to continue to climb and we are sourcing and speaking with and, you know, having conversations with potential candidates every day and, and, and hoping that many more will apply. So we want to share that with you. And so the question at the first round is whether or not you know, Alma leads that part of the process and then brings you the next stage of, of candidates. Or how the board is involved at the first round. So pause there and see what, see what you all think.
Well, let me just share the conversation in our small group. First of all, we assume you're going to lead us through all this because you're good at this. So, but, um, I think when we spoke, um, I think Alma often does small teams. If we put forward 10 to 15 applicants. So there might be two board members and then if we include others or not in that review and those are possibly recorded. That's my understanding. Our subcommittee talked about that and thought maybe the whole board, we need to decide if everyone wants to be at every one of the, that level interview or not, because that's a conversation. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. And I see Gordon, I see your hand up. I want to say a couple of quick things about that. The first is there's just the practicality of time and what people are able to do. So to find, you know, essentially in order to interview 15 applicants, you would need to find something like 20 hours in your schedule in, in the matter of 10 to 14 days. And it's generally unreasonable for board members to be able to do that and do their regular day jobs or day lives and do their regular board responsibilities. So that at this stage in the process, it's just a practical need to try to, to try to divvy up those applicants. So we typically have teams of two to three interviewers who then will, you know, end up interviewing, um, you know, four to five applicants. Those interviews can be recorded for the board members who are not able to attend to be able to review. So that's typically how we would do it at that stage. And then the full board comes together to be able to debrief, discuss what they saw, what they heard and make their decisions about who moves to the next stage. So we would recommend doing it that way, just in the interest of time and availability. But there's another important reason of, for this. We follow that approach in that this round that we're discussing as well as the semifinalist round. And the reason is this is about your collective genius coming together. And if you're all in the same conversation, you all have one view. But if you can split up and see people in different contexts and different ways, then you're actually able to triangulate a little bit more and you come out with a much more well-rounded view. And you have to trust each other to be able to do this work together. So that shared language among you about what you're looking for, the ability, you know, to bounce off each other's perspectives turns out to be just incredibly valuable in the process. So the Alma team loves that because we feel that it helps strengthen the mitigation of bias in the process. Gordon, and then I saw Maya's hand up. Go ahead, Gordon.
Thanks. So first, I just want to make sure I, I understand if this, the stages are first, we have 30 plus, you know, whatever that number is. And then Alma goes through them and makes a recommendation to, to knock that down to between 10 or 15, something like that.
Yes.
And then from there it goes to the semifinalists and then to the finalists.
That's right.
So I guess I, I have two thoughts. One is on the, um, on the first thing, on the biggest thing. I don't know where other people are at. To me, it would make sense for Alma to make the cut. And I think this is what you're saying, but for board members to have access to all those materials. So that when we come together and you say, here's our recommendation, we think these 15 out of these 30. If somebody says, oh, I thought so and so you didn't choose was really interesting that we can talk about that and incorporate that. But not, I, I mean, having the interviews available is great. I can't imagine. Just speaking for myself, I can't imagine being involved at the interviewing 30 or 40 people and it doesn't seem necessary. I, I do think at the level after that, if we have 15 or fewer, I mean, I guess we could talk about what we're doing, but that's the point at which I would want some kind of input at least from the employee groups. I'm, I'm not opposed to other, you know, if there are some other community organizations or parents organizations, but, but particularly these are the people who are going to have to be working with everyone. Like I'd like some input before we get down to five or six semifinalists. And I know that there was a way when we, when we hired interim superintendent Vanderkar, there was a way that the employee groups were able to have input at that level without violating, while maintaining confidentiality. And it was essentially something that happened between them and the consultants. And then consultants came to, part of the report back to the board was some summary of that, of that kind of input or where it was significant. So I, I don't know what the exact thing is, but that's a, that's a stage at which I think would be good to figure out some way to incorporate that kind of input. Thank you.
That's great. Thanks, Gordon. That's, that's definitely a decision point for the board and you hit the nail on the head. The main question is around protecting the confidentiality of the candidates and um, vast majority of these individuals, if not all of them, will be gainfully employed. And, um, and probably in high level leadership roles within their organization. So we do tend to see a lot of cautiousness on the part of the candidates about how and when information might go out about their candidacy. And, and that would be the main consideration, Gordon, is, is to be able to, if you include anyone other than the board at the earlier stages, how do you protect the confidentiality of the candidates? And that's, that'll be the top question from the, from the applicants. I saw Maya's hand up. I know I see Laurel too. Maya, was there something you wanted to share?
Um, I, I think I got my question answered after I.
Okay, thanks, Maya. Laurel?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, I guess my question arose when Gordon mentioned parent groups. Uh, most parent groups are usually made up of parents from high to middle, high socioeconomic um, levels. How does Alma include people like parent groups and make sure we get like a really um, fair cross section of the parents involved?
Yeah. So, uh, so the way that we do this is we open up the announcements just like we did at the start of the process. Um, so we would work with the district if the district does things like robo calls or messaging to parents, working with those same community groups that are really active in the Eugene 4J community to help us spread the word. What we do is we open up to nominations. People can nominate themselves or they can nominate other people. And what we do there is we're really looking and we would need the board's direction. And how, what makes a well-represented group of panelists? But in other districts, this has included the community. It has included race and gender affiliation with, um, you know, for example, special needs students or association with LGBTQ plus community. You know, what are the different things, uh, aspects that well represent, um, the 4J community? What we then do is we ask for that information from all of the nominees. And then where we are working with the information that we have to construct panels that well represent the community. If we have more individuals in one grouping, then we have space for, then we choose people by random lottery. We actually have a randomization to choose those individuals. So in the end, um, that, that is a decision point for the board, which is which community is how, how do you want to make those determinations? And then as the nominations come in, um, once they all come in, that's, that's how we make those choices. I think to Gordon's point that, that typically is in the past has been at the finalist stage. We're actually working on a, on a different search right now where the thought is to have this nomination process, but then to be able to have panelists participate in different ways and different stages of the process. So you could do this nomination piece now and then, you know, have people participate. Obviously, in particular, parents are working parents and you know, work at varying times of day and night. And so trying to work to create something that all parents can participate in is, is really important. And similar for teachers, you know, to make sure that they can be either excused from the classroom and have someone in their classroom while they participate or do it after school hours. So it's not disrupting what's happening during the school day.
So, um, that sounds great. The only concern I have is based on the part of random lottery. I would guess the majority of people signing up would be from like parent volunteers from higher or middle, high socioeconomic, um, levels. So you may, maybe once you go into the part where you're randomly picking people, it ends up we get lopsided because of that. How do we, um, how do we careful of that?
Yeah. So let's say we have, they're kind of like, um, so, so, so essentially we would say, okay. Let's say we have a panel of 12 people. You know, what are the communities we want represented and how many people from each community do we want represented? Let's talk about ethnicity or race. Um, we might say even immigrant status or first language. And we would say in a group of 12, how do we want that community, um, to be represented? So for example, in Denver Public Schools, there was a real interest because of the demographic of that community to have two monolingual Spanish panelists who were also parents. And so we ended up with two monolingual Spanish parents who represented two different parts of the community. One parent who, who had a child in the charter school, one parent who had a child in a neighborhood community school. And so you're, you're kind of, you're looking for the different hats that people wear that they can bring to, to that interview process. And so we, we ask people for that affiliation. We take them on, at, at their word on that. And then we are saying, okay, well, we have four spots for certain things and three spots for certain things and two spots for certain things. Um, and then if a group happens to be overrepresented, then we're running a lottery, uh, for those spots, but we're not just doing a random lottery for everybody. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And it, and it really is incumbent on us to get the word out to the community and really encourage people to participate as well. Yeah. Gordon?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure who, who this would go to, but I just um, think it would be useful if we could look back at how this was handled in the search that resulted in Superintendent Gus Gustavo Valderras being hired, which is the last full search, because I know, I, I believe that there was a process for both employee and community input. I'm not sure it was perfect, but just knowing what was done and turned out to be at least workable last time would be one useful piece of information.
So I don't know. Mary, you might have that information right at hand or, yeah.
Oh, I think you're muted.
Are you, are you calling on me?
Yes.
Okay, I can answer that question and Alicia can fill in too if I forget anything, but I also had a comment I wanted to make too. As I recall, with Dr. Valderras, uh, we had a, like a pool of, I'm going to say eight, maybe 10 semifinalists. The board interviewed all of those and then it was winnowed down to, I want to say, um, uh, three, I believe. But in that intervening time, when there were, uh, when we were received like the 10 from the, the recruiter, that's when the, the community groups were invited to, you know, offer their thoughts. Then when we got down to the final three, then I know that EEA, um, you know, had like a one-on-one meeting with them as well as I believe OSEA and MAPS and those, uh, their impressions and feedback were provided to the board um, as a part of our assessment of the final candidates. And that's my recollection. And I don't know if I'll, I'll let Alicia jump in if that's wrong or, or staff if I've misrepresented that in any way. And then I had a comment too. So if you come back to me after Alicia and perhaps staff had a chance to, to comment, I'd appreciate it. Did I get it right, Alicia or Carrie?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I had a little different recollection. I thought we didn't do the community meeting still down to the last two or the last three, but.
Well, maybe it was, doctor, maybe it was Dr. Berman.
Right. We had a community group that really did the assessment of Dr. Berman.
Okay. Let's see. Thank you for filling, filling my memory.
Great. You have, you want to make your comment, Mary?
And I didn't know if, if, if staff wanted to correct my memory on any of that either, because that was by my recollection, which isn't always good.
In that most recent search in 2015, um, as well as in the previous search, the, the public community forums were held at the point where there were finalists, uh, down to, I believe, three, uh, in, in each where there, um, there were community forums, uh, held in 2015, 2011. Uh, I, I believe there was, uh, some opportunity for community members to weigh in in the earlier stage and I can, uh, share the list of who was participating and, um, and what that looked like in a minute. Uh, but the community group, which included members, uh, or, or leadership from the employee groups was part of the narrowing down to the semifinalists for the board to interview.
And that's, that's what I'm thinking of because I remember there were some of the budget committee, some of the chamber of commerce. Because I remember briefing a couple of people about that. So if you want to look it up, Carrie, while I'll, I'll ask my question then, um, or make my comment. And, uh, this is, this should come as no surprise to both Maya and Judy, because we talked about it at our, our meeting yesterday. And I just have a problem with, um, breaking up into teams to do these interviews. This is our one chance, the one person we hire. And I, you know, I've been saying how long this is going to take a lot of time, is going to take a lot of time. And here we are, it's taken a lot of time. And I would hate, hate to have us, you know, try to, and don't mean this in a bad way, find shortcuts to save time. It kind of this critical juncture in the search. Uh, I think that we spent, you know, two full days over the weekend talking about this, talking about how we work together. And this is an extension of that. And so I am not a fan of breaking up into teams, uh, to, uh, to, to narrow this down and feel like, um, uh, thank you, Carrie, for that. Feel like it's so important that we need to make it a priority in our schedule. And I, you know, I'm, I'm just like everybody else. I'm, I'm overwhelmed with it, but this is really quite important. So thank you for that, Carrie. That's what I was looking at. Thanks.
So I see Laurel has her hand up. I'm wondering, it's 6:42 and you know, we're going to be, um, making some decisions going deeper on March 9th on this topic. We could send the materials that Carrie brought out to everyone before that. And, um, let's get Laurel's comment. And then I went, I have a question for the Alma, the Alma team.
Um, yes, I think that it's like what Mary said, it's important that we don't, you know, take shortcuts. But I also loved the idea of different groups doing these, the interviews, and then we all watch them. So are we all asking the same questions? I mean, we're not making up questions on our own, right? I work for the government. We don't get to do that.
That's right.
Yeah. So I feel like it actually will give us some, I, I like that idea because it, it saves A, us all from participating in every single interview. But B is we still get all the information. So I, um, appreciate, I feel like it's the best of both worlds. And I, I hope, I'm, I'm hopeful about that. Thanks.
Thanks, Laurel. So yeah, and I appreciate both of your comments. In fact, um, if you, if we did it this way, you would absolutely record all of them. So every board member could watch every interview. You wouldn't have to be there. You could watch it at night. You could watch it during the day, especially for those who are working. I think that helps a lot. In, in the earlier rounds, you are doing the same exact interview activity in the semifinalist round. We actually like to give you different lenses. So one interview might really focus on instructional leadership. One interview might really dive deeply into racial equity. One might really dive deeply into finance and operations of the district. And, and they're all recorded, so you can see them all. But over the course of an afternoon, all board members get to engage with candidates in different ways. And what it does is when we're not all watching the exact same interview, we actually get a much richer look at the candidate. And then we bring our collective minds together. So from the perspective of, if everyone's in the room watching one, one hour interview, um, some voices can dominate others in terms of what we saw and what we heard. But if each group only had two or three people, you can actually have a better representation of voice and perspective on the candidates. So we think it really helps with, uh, again, like being able to make the decision with your eyes wide open. It's pretty amazing how, how it does that. And of course we would, we would want the interview teams to also be diverse and to represent the diversity, whether it's from the board or, or from the community members. So we can talk more about the differences, but definitely Laurel, in the earlier stages, everyone's asking roughly the same, but all the same questions. And then, um, if we do it the semifinals, we might have different kinds of activities at that stage as well.
But all the candidates get all the same question.
Absolutely. Yes. A hundred percent. And they, and, and all of them would be recorded for board members. Not, you know, they're really just for board member review, uh, at the earlier stages in the process. Maya?
Maya, hopefully, yes, can ask.
I was actually going to ask what Judy just jumped in and asked. So I appreciate that. Um, and I just want to clarify, Judy, we will have time to discuss all this, right? We don't need to put forth our, our, um, ideas quite yet, right?
Okay. That's what March 9th, that is our main agenda, along with approving the qualities and quality, you know, the characteristics and qualities. So I'm going to say, we do get to meet with the consulting group, our subcommittee on Thursday. And then we meet on Tuesday to plan the meeting. So hopefully we'll have this in a format of where to move forward. And we can talk about, you all are welcome to join us on the night that wasn't on your calendar. So we don't expect it, but just know you're always welcome if you want to be part of this conversation. So, um, at that, if seeing no more hands up, then I'm going to say we, we get 15 minutes before, um, our next, uh, board meeting. But I don't know, Monica, if you have any part, last words here?
No, just, we're so optimistic and, and excited for this next stage of the process. And thrilled to be working with you all and continue to be just, um, just very happy with how productive the retreat was. Really enjoyed having that time with each of you.
Well, I think we all agree, we all got to do that at the end of the retreat. So thank you and thank you all. Alma group that came tonight for all your work and we'll see you soon. So I'm going to say this work session is adjourned. See everyone at seven.
Thank you. Bye-bye.